Good afternoon. This is a special meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Thursday, May 14, 2020. It's 2:00 p.m. This meeting is being held via teleconference. Madam Clerk, will you call and the members to see if we have a quorum, please?
Yes, Mayor Heading.
It is here.
Councilmember Addis.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Heller.
Here.
And Councilmember McPherson.
Councilmember McPherson will be absent today. She sends her apologies. She had a pre-scheduled elective procedure. So we shall begin. We do have a quorum. I will call the meeting to order. And this is the time for public comment for items on the agenda only, or again, public comment for items on the agenda. And Madam Clerk, if you'll put up the slide showing the call-in number and the link to this Zoom meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like to call in, the number is on the screen, channel 20. It's being shown on channel 20. And there's also a link if you'd like to come in via Zoom, and you'll have to push the raise your hand button. So with that, do we have any public comment in the queue, Zeke?
Yes, sir. We have two with their hands raised. I'll go to the first caller.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Wise?
John, welcome.
Takes me a moment to unmute. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor, council, city staffers and citizens. John Wise, resident, business owner for over 40 years, homeowner for over 30 years. I love Morro Bay. I know we are in this together, and our challenge is tough with this pandemic. My main comments this afternoon relate to dedicated city staffers and businesses that have suffered during this pandemic. It breaks my heart. I know tough decisions have been made, and many are ahead of us. I'm not privy to all of the specific cuts, but I'm really sorry to whoever has either lost their livelihood or taken cuts. My heart goes out to you and wish you the best, and also to the businesses that have suffered losses or shut down altogether. I was really sorry to read a front-page article yesterday of the permanent shutting down of our skateboard museum owned by my friend Jack Smith. In his honor, I'm wearing his skateboard museum shirt. I know he says it was time to finally retire after two months of pause, and not due directly to the COVID pandemic. Jack Smith is a real inspiration to us all and a true public hero. Sadly, on the other hand, the Los Socios Gym has closed permanently due to COVID. Undoubtedly, there are other businesses in Morro Bay that are not reopening due to the COVID, so I'm told. Even as an essential business, my business is down significantly, but I'm doing pretty good, as is my family and staff. I'm on the side of our city manager, Scott Collins. I applaud his recent decision to form a budget committee as he addressed these unanswered budget questions along with Mayor, City Council regarding the staggering deficit. I hope and believe viable solutions can and will be found. Please have a good meeting. And wherever you are, Roger Ewing, my best to you from John Wise. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Zeke, next for public comment?
Yes. Carol Truesdale?
Welcome, Carol.
Thank you, Mayor Heading and the rest of the staff. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. I concur with what John Wise had said about all the individuals that have suffered during this pandemic. It is not an easy time for any one of us because there are no solutions to the COVID-19 right now, except keeping our family and ourselves wearing masks and gloves. I do have a concern that the county is not mandating people to wear masks in and about public. I would hope that the City Council would take issue with that. We're in a very small community, and we have a very different type of a community. Majority of the people are, like myself, retired and at that golden age. So I would hope that you would take my thoughts and comments into consideration and mandate that we wear, at least during this opening segment, until we see exactly how everything plays out, that when we see a spike in the COVID-19 in our Morro Bay, I'd hate to see that happen. So I would hope that you would take my thoughts into consideration. And I thank you, everybody, for everything that you're doing. That's my comment.
Thank you, Carol. And Zeke, I think Mr. Wise is coming through. John, you may want to mute yourself. Thank you. Any other public comment, Zeke?
Yes, sir. Erica Crawford?
All right. Erica, welcome.
Hi, thanks, Erica. Thanks so much for having me. Good afternoon, honorable mayor and council. Thank you all for your leadership at this time, indeed at all times, but especially at this time. The Chamber, we submitted a survey to you last evening. I want to assure you that that is not a scientific survey, but it's rather something to sort of give you a pulse of the business community and to get their voices at the table today. My comments this afternoon are aimed at encouraging you to empower your staff to begin getting ahead of adaptations to business as usual that COVID-19 recovery is sure to bring, and to offer this empowerment with some assurance that perfection may not be achievable and that small missteps and mistakes will be tolerated. There are many communities in California, in the nation, and indeed internationally, that are pulling from a playbook that reimagines public spaces. We forecast that dining in, while imminently permissible per governor's orders, may not be supported by consumers, at least not right away. Why not seize this opportunity to set the stage for outdoor experiences, including dining, in a way that is worthy of our waterfront? Empower your staff to take risks at this time, not risk with the community's public health or public safety, but risk that put to bed long-held tensions in our community about things like parking, pedestrian throughways, outdoor plazas, and adequate receptions like trash and restrooms for our visitors. Our business community wants to thrive. Our post-COVID economy will demand much adaptation from them. It will demand much adaptation from municipalities like Morro Bay as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Zeke, next in the queue, anybody?
Yes, sir. Melanie Williams?
Melanie, welcome.
Hi, Melanie Williams-Mahan. I was looking at the news this morning, and I was listening to Richard Bright's testimony. He's the ousted vaccine chief. And his testimony today stated that we need national testing. Time is running out. And Fauci has been very clear, we don't need to open the schools. It's going to get worse. I just don't understand why we're acting like this is, you know, over. It's not close to over. And I also would like to know how many businesses that our chamber members have been contacted individually by the chamber to find out what they need and what they want to do, besides surveys. I've seen the surveys. And another thing, you know, I'm not ragging on Erica, but you know, not perfect means that people could die. It doesn't mean that it's, you know, going to get a bad review. It means people are going to get sick. So unless we're ready to think that we know better than scientists, I don't think it's time to open anything. And that's really all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Melanie. Zeke, next?
Next speaker is Penny.
Penny, you have to unmute. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, Penny. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Didn't know it was muted. Anyway, I'm a business owner. And so I just wanted to say also, when you hear Erica say "the businesses," she's not talking about all the Morro Bay businesses. She's talking about her members. I just want to make that clear. There's a lot of us that are not her members. So I have been doing the drive-up, you know, people calling in order, drive up to the curb, and we take it out to them. And we're very careful when we do that. We're masked. Things are in bags, paper bags. We use a lot of hand sanitizer, and we wash our hands after every time we deliver anything. And I want to tell you, I am not sure whether I think it's a good idea to open more or not. Of course, as a business owner, I would love to be fully open and, you know, back and making money again. That would be nice. But as just a member of the Morro Bay community, I'm concerned that it may be too early. And I watch what I can, and I read what I can on the internet, and I don't think there's any consensus of opinion anywhere on what we should do. The main things I'm hearing in the community are the anger at people coming in from outside. And yet, on the other hand, those people bring in a lot of money. So I guess what I'm here to say is a lot of us in the business community just are not sure which way we think the city and the county and the state should go. And we're trying to be responsible and keep everyone in mind, and not just the dollar, not just the bottom line. That's all.
Thank you, Penny. Appreciate that very much. Zeke, next?
Next caller, please. You're on the line.
Hello, this is Meredith Bates.
Welcome, Meredith.
Thank you. And I really appreciate all you all are doing as a council and staff. I'm sure it's very challenging, the work you're doing, and I thank you. And I have a lot of empathy for the business owners. It's got to be a very tough time right now to try to stay open. I think a lot of us residents are buying gift cards and doing takeout, and we really care about our local small businesses. So that's why I am in support of the Chamber's recommendation not to close down the Embarcadero to traffic. I know a lot of other communities are closing their streets and allowing just walkers, but I don't think that would be positive in Morro Bay. I think it would harm our businesses even more. However, I do really support keeping the Rock Parking Lot closed. I'm not really seeing clearly the Chamber's argument because I don't see businesses out there by the Rock. And if we cannot enforce, even if we put stripes out there, if we're not able to enforce the rules, I don't think that would be a good solution. Now, this is one of my ideas, is I know we're educating people that are not following the guidelines and not staying six feet apart, but if we went ahead and fined people that $1,000, that would help our coffers, and it would also discourage tourists from coming into town. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Appreciate that. Zeke, go ahead, next?
All right. We have Stephen Peck.
Steve, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Stephen Peck, and I'm speaking with you on my own behalf today, even though I'm regularly involved in chamber activities. The one thing we know is that the county, through its reach efforts, and the state, through its own efforts, have established a lot of rigorous guidelines and checklists that our businesses will have to comply with as they go through this gradual reopening. And it will be gradual. We're only in the beginnings of, the early beginnings of Stage Two, hoping to move on to the next portion of Stage Two, which could allow additional in-dining and some additional retail. If you believe the county and Penny Bornstein, then it will probably be a matter of days, perhaps a week, by the time that we get on the list that we'll prevent those things. My point is that let's be ready. We need to make sure that, you know, rather than having our customers have only one choice, which is to dine inside, is to provide them with an alfresco dining experience that we believe is probably even healthier, not in an enclosed space, just spaced properly out. As Erica said, this is a playbook that's being read from by many communities in San Luis Obispo County. We can do this safely, and if we do it right, we can make this an opportunity, create some important and very nice public spaces that don't exist right now. It's always hard to be able to do something like this when you're under such pressure, but there's opportunity here to provide an even better experience for our local residents and eventually through our visitors. With that, I'll conclude my comments. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Zeke, next?
One more. Go ahead, caller. You're online.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. This is Dan Sedley.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. I wish to reiterate the words by Mr. Wise. I feel a sense of loss for those that have suffered financial loss, that have suffered in a health sense, that are sheltered at home and trying to do all the right things. I appreciate the things that people are doing. With that said, I too have listened to Dr. Fauci, and he uses non-concrete words like "this might happen, this could happen." Very non-descriptive, non-concrete words about what he thinks might or could, or maybe, and he uses those words. I don't have any faith in those words. I listen to a lot of doctors on the subject, and they directly disagree with him. My point being is that I believe that we should be looking at the plans to begin a stepped and thoughtful reopening. I don't think we should be doing anything which hinders that. Closing of roads, requiring masks, for every doctor that says that wearing masks is the greatest and only thing, there's another doctor that refutes that. I think we need to be allowing our business owners to begin an incremental opening. I'm sure you've heard of Shelley Luther in Texas, who was arrested for opening her salon, but was then released, and she is currently working her salon. And I'm aware that there's other people that are opening their businesses throughout the county unlawfully, but personally, I agree with them. They have to feed their children. They have to find a way to support their family. That's part of the pursuit of happiness, being able to support oneself. I don't believe that COVID-19 supersedes the Constitution or the Bill of Rights. And therefore, I don't believe we should be doing anything more restrictive but paying attention to a thoughtful and incremental reopening. Thank you for this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Zeke, anybody else in the queue?
There's one more with the hand raised.
Okay.
Go ahead, caller. You are live.
Well, perhaps, Zeke, if they do raise their hand, I'll allow them to come in.
Yeah, their-
Any other callers?
Their hand is raised, but-
Okay.
Yeah.
Caller, are you there?
It looks like the phone line went dead for some reason, so.
Okay, if they get back in, let me know, and we'll interrupt and allow them to speak, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to take-
And no others?
Next caller then?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hello, next caller, please?
Good afternoon. This is Jeff Eckles. I'm a business owner here in Morro-
Welcome, Jeff.
Hello, a resident of Morro Bay and a parent of two students at Morro Bay High School. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and residents of Morro Bay. And we appreciate you calling this special meeting very much. And first off, I just want to issue a thank you to the many people that have been involved with a very responsible response to the pandemic. I want to thank the council members for doing such good work and staying on top of this. In particular, our city manager, who I don't think has been getting much sleep over the last couple of months. He's just been right on top of this in terms of being proactive. And I'd also like to thank Erica Crawford over at the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber has been a non-stop link between the business community and the residents and City Hall, so thank you to the Chamber. A couple of comments. I read through the staff report, and I'll go through some of the items that were mentioned in the staff report. Regarding the Rock Parking Lot, I think it makes absolute sense to open up that parking lot. I live in North Morro Bay, close to Domino's Pizza, and I walk down to the Rock about every other day with my daughter. Nice four-mile trip back there, back and forth, and I see cars grouped together out in front of where the parking stanchions are put up. So cars can actually be spaced out much more efficiently if they're allowed to park at the Rock or even over at the pit closer to the high school. It just doesn't make sense to have the roads blocked where they are because then people just gather at those spots instead. The other thing that was in the staff report that I- was increasing trash receptacles. I was actually bringing this to the attention. There we go. Sorry about that. I don't know why. I was going back to being muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. The other item was the trash receptacles. I was mentioning, actually, before the pandemic that we needed more trash receptacles down along the waterfront for various reasons, so I think that is important to do. And then regarding masks, please don't be overly restrictive. The state, as well as the county, for good reason, is not requiring people to wear masks. I wouldn't want to see the city impose that at all. Leave that up to the individual business owners. Trust your business owners. If they want to impose that restriction on their customers, then so be it to that particular business. And I'd also urge the council not to give in to fear. We are doing a good job. Follow the numbers. We've had increased traffic in town over the last three weeks, and the incubation period for the disease is five to seven days, and we haven't had a case. So let's be responsible. Let's open up because we need to open up for the well-being of the entire community and continue to do a good job. So thank you very much. I appreciate you listening to my comments.
Thank you, Jeff. Zeke, do we have another caller?
Yes, sir. I'm going to try this last caller and see if we can get him in.
Thank you.
Caller, are you on? Hello, caller? Are you on? You are live? I can hear somebody.
Hello, public comment? Are you calling in for public comment?
Hello, this is Dan Sedley. I think I've been put in the queue again. I should not be.
Thanks, Dan. We'll let you go. Zeke, anybody else?
Yes, sir. Here's another caller. Hello, caller.
Hello, I believe I've been unmuted again. This is Dan Sedley.
All right, Dan. Okay, sorry about that. There we go. And callers, if you would unraise your hand, I'll know that, because not all your names come up on my list. So if you would put your hand down after you've finished calling that you don't want to talk, then I won't call on you again. All right. And caller, John?
Yes, good afternoon, council members. Thank you for your attention to this. It's been a subject of a lot of interest and concern in my neighborhood. First of all, I'd like to say I want to agree with several of the earlier callers that I think the council needs to be aware that Morro Bay, in large part, is an at-risk population. And so while, you know, some people may feel that we should follow what either the county feels is appropriate for the county as a whole or statewide, I think the council needs to make decisions based on the specific nature of our community. I do feel it's important to note that the CDC, as well as the State of California, as well as the Mayo Clinic, all recommend that face masks should be worn when you're in public settings where you cannot maintain social distancing. And I think all of us who have been to the grocery stores, perhaps any other retail establishments that are open, have found that we can control how we select to space ourselves, but we can't always control how our neighbors space themselves around us. So while I agree that it may be time to start opening some more businesses, I think the council should also consider making a mandate, at least in the City of Morro Bay for the time being, that in those spaces, in enclosed commercial buildings, that masks be required until such time as we really see the numbers stopping or no longer climbing, and until the CDC, State of California, Mayo Clinic, other places feel that it's time to withdraw from that. So I appreciate your consideration of my comments.
Thank you for calling again. Zeke, do we have another caller?
I'm hoping this isn't the same caller, but the hand's up, so I'm going to take it. Hello, caller? Hello, caller?
This is public comment. Are you calling for public comment, City of Morro Bay? Okay, Zeke, anybody else in the queue?
Okay. Let me go here. And there we go. Caller, you're on. Anybody there? Hello, caller. You're online.
Okay, Zeke, anybody else in the queue?
Nobody else with their hand raised.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close public comment and go to our only item. This is a special meeting to discuss and consider possible actions to mitigate community impacts related to COVID-19 pandemic. And I will turn it over for introduction to our esteemed city manager, Mr. Collins. Scott?
Thank you, council and mayor and community members. Thank you for the very thoughtful public comments on a very challenging issue. I'll kind of go through the staff report and then turn it back to council. Hopefully, it will be a good discussion on several items. So the City of Morro Bay, on March 14, 2020, declared a local emergency in response to the growing public health threat related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Since that time, the city has adhered to both the state and county of Slow or Slow County Shelter-at-Home orders, which in essence have limited individuals to staying in their houses except for essential purposes. Governor Newsom and the Slow County Public Health Officer established the orders, which remain in effect, to help flatten the curve of the COVID-19 cases and reduce the impact on the local healthcare system, and particularly our hospitals and intensive care units. At present, at least as of yet- At present, at least as of yesterday, when the staff report was written, Slow County has 227 cases confirmed for COVID-19, four are hospitalized at this time with one death. The nation has, as of yesterday, 1.3 or almost 1.4 million cases, and 83,000 individuals have lost their lives as a result of COVID-19. The city has taken several measures to support the shelter-at-home orders, which are discussed below later. This is in addition to supporting our local business community through deferral of certain payments, waiving late fees, and coordinating with the Chamber of Commerce to assist our local small businesses. The city is also helping its vulnerable residents through the Morro Bay Cares Program and the Are You OK program, which helps those in need with delivery of groceries, prescriptions, and other necessities, and having daily calls to people to do a check-in. And in addition, the city has been providing regular updates to our community. We understand that there is a lot of information out there, a lot of competing narratives, and all that is very confusing. So we're trying our best to provide the factual information as it stands locally. As the COVID-19 situation evolves and we've reached into our eighth week of the shelter-at-home orders, there has been increased discussion and calls for the reopening of the country, the state, and the local area. That conversation, in combination with the unseasonably warm temperatures in the last several weekends, has driven many folks from outside of Morro Bay to come to town, creating challenges for the city and our community. This report now giving outlines existing measures that the city has put in place and as well as discusses potential additional measures that city council may consider as we move forward and try to address the ever-evolving situation. While we as a society are managing the public health crisis, all levels of government have been discussing at some, some level versions of a reopening plan. The purpose of that planning effort is really to be prepared for when reopening of certain segments of our society are allowed and trying to be ahead of the game so that when those businesses are reopened, they have a good plan in place to provide their services safely. And that is a very important consideration. It does take time to get up and running and to do that well. At this time, Slow County has submitted a plan to the state to allow our community to reopen on a, on a more accelerated timeline than otherwise would be allowed with the general state health order. Now, it's important to note here that that does not mean rushing to open. It just means looking closely at our data and to make sure that we're getting a fair view of that to allow for reopening. However, the governor has not approved that plan yet. And until such time, the county, counties are, will remain under this shelter-at-home order by the state. It's important to note that the city has been participating in the discussions about what a reopening would look like, understanding that we do not have authority in that regard. But we appreciate that the county has offered the city to provide that input, understanding that preservation of public health is paramount over all their considerations. So we do need to be prepared for when reopening is allowed. While these planning efforts are important and we have been engaged in those efforts, it is creating confusion and angst for many people. Angst for those who are, who are really suffering economically and either need jobs or need to reopen their businesses to survive financially, and those who are concerned about reopening too quickly, about receiving too many visitors at one time and creating conditions that are unsafe. And a lot of people feel both of those at the same time. So it is very challenging. We want to just acknowledge that. However, folks have been taking it upon themselves to make their own personal decisions, whether the shelter and home order is in place or not, and coming to our town and in some cases, creating some, some conditions that are challenging and concerning to us. Those personal decisions on a large scale are creating impacts on our operations and our community. So I'll go into a few of the areas of which we have taken action and also outline areas that council might want to consider. There's the beaches, boat ramp, parking and embarkadero, sort of one major header. As been discussed, we did close the Morro Bay, sorry, Morro Rock Parking Lot as it's the largest beach parking lot in the county. We did that pretty early on, and other cities have joined in that effort, as well as state parks, to limit access, not closing the beaches, but limiting access to help dissuade those from outside of our community to come here and, and, and reduce the level of congregation on the beach. The city has also, also did close the boat ramp earlier on, except to commercial fishers. However, the county had moved forward recently to allow for recreational fishing as an allowed activity, and we responded by reopening our boat ramp, and it's now open to all, all fishers. We have, we did witness an increase of the number of boaters in town last weekend because of the warm temperatures and the low wind, the pent-up demand for fishing, as well as the, the opening of the salmon season. So we did see that noticeable change. As it relates to the Rock Parking Lot, we believe that effort has reduced the overall number of visitors to town because it's been messaged out to the broader community into the valley that the Rock Parking Lot is not open. However, it has not stopped people from coming here. We should just acknowledge that. The closure has created parking issues in other areas of town, as well as particularly creating some congestion issues down the Embarkadero. Folks are parking in those lots to make, to make the long walk to the beach and also kind of strolling down the Embarkadero and frequenting the local eateries that are open for takeout only at this time. And it's our belief that the Rock Parking Lot closure may be inadvertently creating greater compaction or congestion, if you will, in some of the more confined areas of the Embarkadero, in creating situations where there could be a greater risk in terms of spread of the, the virus. The city council may consider, and we're not necessarily recommending, but may consider modifying the beach parking lot closures to alleviate the pressure on the Embarkadero. That could include opening the entire Rock Lot or maybe segments of it, striping, which we have done before for special events and things like that. So we would like to get input from council on that piece. City Council could also further measure to address crowding in, in areas by closing parts of the parking lot near the Coast Guard Station down past the new Morro Landing to provide greater, greater walking space. Now, we know that also creates parking issues, and there's no perfect solution. But that was one idea that we, we considered, and the other was maybe closing down street traffic along Embarkadero from Harbor Street to Pacific Street. But there are significant challenges implied in that as well, with some retailers being allowed to do curbside, curbside commerce exchanges and some construction projects going on down that area. So it's not a simple thing to do, but it is a consideration. Moving on to trash and restrooms, visitors are creating similar issues for, for our trash. We, as, as one of the callers mentioned, we did have a trash issue to begin with. We were, we were trying to rectify the summer or in advance of the summer. However, with people only being allowed to do takeout, it takes about a family of four and a few of those combined to fill trash can with their trash. And we do have people who are cycling through and emptying those trash cans, but we simply cannot keep up with the volume. And so we are recommending placement of several large roll-off containers in strategic areas near the existing open eateries to, to help accommodate that additional trash because it does have to go somewhere, and you can't go into the restaurant to dispose of your trash. So it's all landing in mostly in public trash, trash cans. We are also enhancing the number of porta-potties available in strategic locations. And those, some of those costs can be reimbursed through the FEMA reimbursement process. Moving on to social distancing and signage, the city has been working closely with businesses that have been opened down in, in certain areas where you've seen a high volume of people and placing tape or signage on the floor to, to help demonstrate six feet spacing and using other kinds of ways to allow for queuing in line in a safe, safe manner. We really appreciate the efforts of our waterfront businesses to do that and removing seating and things like that to discourage congregation. In addition, the city is proposing to place signage throughout the visitor-serving areas to help encourage good social distancing, recognizing that they're here. Even though we've been attempting to discourage it, they are here. And if they're going to be here, we would like to see good social adherence to social distancing. Police presence will be increased in these impacted areas through use of overtime, and those associated overtime and signage costs are FEMA reimbursable. Onto a, a more challenging topic is enforcement. The city does have the ability to hand out administrative citations up to $1,000 for violation of the shelter-at-home order. Our approach, based on policy, is to first notify and educate and give a warning, official warning, before a citation can be issued. You know, that's, that's sort of the overriding philosophy for the city has been for quite some time. So we can't just issue a $1,000 site. And that's probably a good thing because it's not capricious and, and there's potential legal challenges if, if we just went directly to that. But we also understand it's important to get compliance. And so we've been utilizing our police and code enforcement officers to get that compliance. And when we've had issues, whether it was with business owners or with folks congregating, we do get compliance through education. But nonetheless, we have heard concerns that there isn't enough enforcement. So it's important to note that we are, we are attempting to do that. We do have limited resources, of course, and are really trying to get compliance where we can. Last topic that is outlined in the staff report is, is the issue of masks. City Council, the last regular council meeting requested that we bring forward this discussion. To throw it out there and to kick around is not an easy one at all. Lot of opinions, of course, and even difference of opinion within the, the health field. The Centers for Disease Control Prevention Guidelines, or CDC, and state guidelines recommend wearing of cloth masks in public settings when social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. That is a recommendation. At this time, Slow County Public Health Officer has not mandated the wearing of masks outside at this time or in public areas. In fact, she's issued a white paper which was attached to the staff report that concludes that there's no evidence to support such an order to wear a mask in the community setting at this time, and that she supports cashiers and customers wearing cloth masks inside grocery stores or in any essential service where social distancing is hard to obtain, but is not a mandate at this time. The report also states that supporting evidence is not strong enough to issue an order to mandate the use of cloth masks at this time. Consumer preference is already accomplishing that in most of the county. Again, that was from the public health officer, not the city. We just wanted to make sure that was clear. But she is, is in a lot of ways dictating the, the public health policy in our area. Several neighboring cities have either taken up this issue or are considering it. Pismo Beach adopted on our first reading an ordinance that would require wearing of masks in businesses. We understand there's been pretty healthy debate since that time, and they will be considering second reading soon. City of Slow considered a resolution, which did not pass for them to do that. And I believe several other cities in the county may be considering this mask issue soon. So that concludes my report and happy to answer any questions. I also have the fire chief, the police chief, or city attorney, or finance and public works director, or community development director here. And I just want to make sure it's noted that the chamber, when they did their survey, went out to over 893 businesses, and they've held numerous roundtables beyond their membership to make sure that we get good input from the business community broadly. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for your excellent oral report, and also thank you for your written report. What I'm going to do, council, is ask you to open with questions first and reserve comments for our summary time. And so this would be any questions of staff at, at present. And I'll start with Councilmember Addis. Any questions for staff?
Just one, and I want to say thank you to Scott for getting this together so quickly. I know it came rather quickly, the scheduling of this meeting and many other questions that we had. So I very much appreciate that. Is there any evidence? And I did briefly look at the chamber's survey. Is there negative work at our side of the bar, walking down to the beaches? I've seen all of that myself, but in terms of a financial impact on business, is there any evidence that the Rock closure is negative?
I, I think there's a little breaking up going on there. Sorry, Don, but Councilmember Addis, I mean, I think you were asking, is there any evidence that the Rock Parking Lot closure is affecting local businesses financially? Is that their question?
Yeah. Is there any evidence that they're affected negatively financially? Not the congestion issues and all that, you know, I know people are still going, they're parking outside of the barriers, but just the financial impact to businesses, does the Rock closure have an effect one way or the other?
Good, good question. I don't know if I could answer that without doing some, some study. But I would say that the city has been careful, as, as has the county and other cities in our, in our county, to ensure that people understand that this isn't the time to visit our community. This, our central services are open, and yes, we do have recreational outlets that other communities do not have. But the state order is pretty clear that you shouldn't be traveling other than for essential purposes. And part of that is getting outdoors and getting some fresh air. But you're able to do that in your own community, and we've made that abundantly clear in numerous messages and communications with the media. And I understand that some business community members don't like that. Understandably, they think that may be drawing people away from us. And I've explained to several of them conversations that it, I understand it's a hard message, but, but ultimately, we're trying to manage a public health crisis. So it's hard to know for sure, Councilmember Addis, if, if our messaging has any impact one way or the other. I think consumers are making decisions based on what they believe is occurring beyond what state may be mandating or the counties may be mandating. So it's hard to, it's hard to know what factor the Rock closure plays in all of that.
And then at one time, the sort of all of the cities came together to talk about beach closures. So, and I know there's, if the Rock were to open for the parking lot, would we be the first community to sort of welcome people back to these areas? Or would we be right in line with the other cities across the county that have beaches?
Good, good question. I, I would say that no other cities have, have sort of, I guess, loosened restrictions on parking. And, and some of that was in response to the community members who felt it was becoming more challenging for them to access the, those recreational activities that they enjoy as community members. So we wouldn't be the first. I just think we'd be the most visible because of the Rock Lot is the largest lot in, in the county.
Do it go to?
Yes.
And then lastly, do we know timeframes on Oceano Dunes? Or what, what's happening there with opening and, or staying closed?
Good question. I, I did speak with the superintendent for our area that runs up to Santa Cruz. So he does not oversee the, the, the South County, if you will, of state parks. But I think they're all sort of, the whole state's sort of working in concert. So I think it would be sort of a larger move with loosening restrictions across the board. And I don't have any indication when that's going to happen.
Okay. And then I know I said lastly, but one more. Opening the Rock would be compliant with the state order? I mean, there's no issues with the state order if we decide to open the Rock Parking Lot?
Correct. The, with the exception of Orange County, which a couple of weeks ago, the governor, you know, said, you know, mandated those beaches be closed. No such, the order is, is silent on, on it beyond that. A, a lot of counties have taken it upon themselves or cities to either close their beaches or restrict recreational access only, or restrict the hours. Some going so far as to check IDs, which is probably illegal. So there's, there's a wide range of, of response to this, but the, the state order does not require or mandate it. So if, if the city were to lift the parking restriction, it would still be in compliance with the state order.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Move to Councilmember Heller, sir. Questions, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the 10 people that took time out of their Thursday afternoon to call in. And it's a great, great participation, and I think all the different issues and opinions and the things that, that were And I think all the different issues and opinions and the things that, that we're struggling with to make decisions on were reflected in one way or another by all the comments. So I want to thank you all for taking time to do that. Thank you, Mr. Collins and staff, for all that you guys continue to do day after day. And I'd like to specifically thank you, Mayor Herring, for scheduling this meeting because we all know there are a lot of questions out there. And there's an enormous amount of information coming from different levels of government, coming from private agencies and nonprofits, and it's continually changing. So I, I think it's really important that we have this meeting. I want to thank you, thank you for that. The thing that, that I really want to try and clarify in my own mind is where we stand with the requirements of the levels of government above us. So, Mr. Collins or, or Mr. Mayor, you can chime in and answer these if you like or can. But is there anything that the federal government is requiring that we're not in compliance with at this point?
No. They, the feds have given general recommendations and guidelines, but the may, I'm sorry, the president has, is in essence delegated reopening responsibilities and duties while adhering to the overall CDC guidelines, but has delegated decision-making down to the state level. So we are, we are, we are in full compliance.
I just wanted to check that box, so. Okay, great, great. Now, the, the next thing is the county, relationship of the county to Sacramento. Now, as I understand it, the county submitted two plans to Sacramento recently. The attestation plan, which is a mouthful for basically saying, we're ready, we think, to go to the next phase. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
So that was submitted and then we, did we also submit the containment plan? That if it doesn't work and we, and the cases go up, we have to pull, pull things back? This is how we would do it and we're prepared to do that? Is that, is that right?
That, that was included in the, the START, which is an acronym. I won't go into what, what's the, for the START, the START guidelines, which were submitted in, in, in consul, or in combination with the attestation plan outlines sort of the triggers that would require us to ratchet back. Yes.
Okay. And do you know when we actually submitted that to Sacramento? Anybody?
I can answer that, yes, I can answer.
I thought you might know that.
Yeah, it was last Friday.
Last Friday, okay.
Last Friday, yes.
So they haven't had it too long. And as I understand it, we've had no response? Or have we had a response at all from Sacramento on that?
Not a formal response. However, good discussions occurring between public health officer Penny Bornstein and the highest levels of the, I think it's the, the Public Health Agency or department within the state.
I might add, Scott, thank you. I just might add, councilor Heller, that the attestation was standardized for all counties throughout the state and all counties had to submit the same attestation, which had a number of criteria that would have to be met. And the public health director and board of supervisors would have to attest that the county quote unquote met the criteria that were established by the state to move to the next level. That attestation, as I mentioned, was submitted Friday after the board of supervisors approved the public health director's attestation that we met those criteria. However, at present, the state of California has sanctioned approximately 11 counties that they feel have met the criteria to move to the next phase of reopening, which is the second, it gets complicated, the second phase of, of phase two, second part of phase two. However, there's still discussion going on between our public health director and the state public health director regarding two specific criteria and our ability to meet those. And we haven't been given the authority to move forward as of yet. I hope that helps.
That's helpful, thank you very much. So the metrics that we do not need at this point in order to make, in order to go into phase two, do they, does that have to do with contact tracing? Or the number of new cases over the last 14 days, which I don't think we've met?
The first was the number of cases in 14 days. It had to be one per 10,000 or less. And the county did not meet that. The explanation for meeting the intent of the criteria on the part of our public health director was that we had an outbreak within CMC, which is a self-contained unit that had a large number of cases. And, and if those cases plus another subsector were removed, she felt that we met that criteria. And then secondarily, there was a criteria that required 1.5 tests per thousand population. At the time of submission last Friday, we were at 1.1 tests per thousand, which was below the 1.5. And the attestation was we have ramped up testing. Two sites are opening up and by a date certain, which I believe was the, I could be wrong, the 17th of May, we, we would be meeting that criteria. So those, I believe, are the two criteria that are being discussed with the state regarding meeting the intent to move to the next phase. Thanks.
Thank you. So do you think at this point there is some hope that even though we may not meet these numbers, that we might get a green light from Sacramento? Or do you have any sense at all about where they're going with this?
My opinion is there's always hope. However, the understanding that I've been given from the higher ups is that the state is being very careful not to allow exceptions to open the door for other counties that think they meet the criteria, but do not quite have the, the, the essentials of it in place to be able to actually meet it. So they're trying to be, the state is trying to be as consistent as possible with regard to the application of the criteria across each county.
Okay. So we're okay as far as the number of contact tracers that we need to have? Is that not an issue for?
Well, again, the, again, the state has not sanctioned the plan yet, but the, the only two criteria that did not quote unquote meet exactly the intent were the two that I gave you. All others were within the parameters established by the state.
Okay, okay. Then the other question I had about the numbers have to do with the different facilities like CMC, Lompoc Prison, assisted living facilities, places that tend to be hotspots for COVID-19. Has the county tested all of those locations? Is that something they want to do or they haven't done? Or, or have they done that? And it sounds like those numbers generally are included in the total number of cases that we see every day. Is that true?
That, that is correct. There is significant testing, not only at CMC, but also within each of the extended care facilities. And there are different protocols for testing there. And there's more frequent and a higher volume of testing going on in those organizations now, including not only staff, residents, but also residents, I should say.
Okay. And then just one more question about this. I'm sorry about all the detail, but I'm a zoology major and I'm into this stuff.
No problem.
Has the county taken any steps to identify the regions in the county where, I mean, Moro Bay's done a fantastic job with this. I mean, we've had six, maybe seven cases now over the last eight weeks or so. Done a great job in containment and can, and no increases to speak of relatively, speaking for Moro Bay. As, is the city, is the county taking any kind of action to try and identify where the cases continue to trend upward? And what can be done to ameliorate that, take care of that or help, help that come back down?
Yes, they, they, daily, if you go to the EOC report and you look at the details, they maintain statistics not only by what I'll call the four regions. They've identified North County, South County, Central and Coastal. And then also each of the city's case counts are also on a daily basis updated. And the, the trend is the most significant increases are primarily in North County and primarily in the city of Paso Robles. However, the Central, which includes San Luis Obispo and Abula Beach, remains fairly steady. Moro Bay, as you know, has had only six cases for a large number of weeks. We had our seventh case last week. So we have basically, our curve has flattened in this city. And then South County has seen just mild increases. But again, North County, cities of Atascadero, Paso Robles are the two areas that have increased significantly. And then there was the outbreak at CMC with regard to the inmates and employees that involved 12 cases.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I knew, I knew you would have all these answers. I appreciate all the time you put into, to, in your background, which really helps us. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you for letting me take some time with this.
Not, not a problem. Council member Davis, sir, questions?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes.
Scott, you're proposing, you're suggesting that we increase the number of dumpsters? And those are big structures. Are they going to be unsightly? How do you, how do you propose placing them? So, so that we can use them to gather trash without looking like, like a, a big dump?
Well, we're going to paint murals on them or you're going to, I'm just kidding. We are going to, to use signage to, to help make them a little more appealing and also to, to help direct people to them. These are going to be temporary for now. So they won't be, I can't make promises that they're not going to be a little unsightly, but they will address the more unsightly scene that we saw last week, which was trash just kind of thrown everywhere or people setting trash on top of trash cans because they were already full and seagulls getting into them. So I think this is sort of the best we can do. But Jen, Jen Cowley may speak a little bit more about sort of placement as the acting public works director who helped get these ordered.
Hi, good afternoon. So we have four three-yard rollaways scheduled to be delivered tomorrow based on conversations with the maintenance crew in our harbor department on, on the most unsightly spots this past weekend. We have one going, perhaps the most inconvenient one will be going between Anchor Park and Gio's where there's, tends to be a lot of traffic for takeout food. We'll put it on, in the street, on the street, take up a parking space and comb that off. There's not really a good location outside of that, in, in that area. And we have one going in the front street parking lot, one going down by G, Gaffo area in that parking lot, and then one in Centennial Park parking lot as well. Those seem to be the most heavily, heavily populated or polluted areas with litter last weekends. And we are hoping that will help solve, solve some of that.
Okay. But are, are dumpsters designed that people can put their trash into them directly? Or are you planning to use them as, as gathering places from, from the smaller trash receptacles?
They are going to be equipped with the slotted lids, like exist down at the harbor or at the rock right now so that people can put their trash in through the lid, through the slot, without having to touch the lid. That tends to be the problem with dumpsters is you don't want to lift up that lid. In all cases, it doesn't work. Sometimes if the takeout containers are too big or there's too many, people don't push it through there. So we'll keep an eye on that. And if we need to use it to, you know, collect some of the trash that we pick up ourselves, we can do that. But the, the hope and the goal is people will use them to put their own trash in.
Okay. And the porta potties, are they generally going to be congregated where we already have public restrooms? So that people will know where to expect to find them or?
Yes. We talked to Honey Hut, who we have the porta potties through, about what they were experiencing with cleaning them and where they were getting the most use out of them. And so we've added eight porta potties to, at three locations that already had them down on the Embarcadero. And then we're adding two more in the front street lot, which across the street, you know, near the bakery.
Okay. And the street closures, you're mentioning as possibilities clo, closing some of the parking area by the Coast Guard Station. And also closing off the Embarcadero between Harbor and Pacific. And how do you see that that will be a benefit?
If, if done well, you know, you would sort of create more well-worn pathways, you know, going in different directions where you're not having people walk right past each other. Because of the compression down from the Coast Guard Station, pretty much all the way until you break past Little Hut, there's more confined spaces. You have park, parking in all, all directions. And then you have the pathway between tho, those two rows of parking. And, and so that everybody has to sort of walk through that same area, which makes it hard for people to avoid each other. So that, that was sort of the thinking there. And then as far as the Embarcadero is concerned, it, it was one of the ideas. It sort of came out with the master, master plan or, or looking at the waterfront is to have wider sidewalks and in wider areas for people to, to move around. The sidewalks on the water side of the Embarcadero are pretty narrow. And so just trying to figure out ways to alleviate the congestion, to help reduce the risks, risk factors. That's, that's primarily what this is driven towards. But it could also be sort of joined together with those, those ideas of when reopening occurs to think about outdoor dining and situations. But that's easy to imagine and hard to implement. So it was just something we wanted to throw out to see if there was any interest. I think we'd have to be very careful and also work with the businesses that are, you know, planning to reopen and those are able to do curbside pickup, not inadvertently make it any more challenging for them.
Yeah. And I'm also thinking that the entrance to that large parking lot next to Centennial Park is off of that area. So by closing the street, we would lose an enormous amount of parking.
Depends on where you do it. That is, that, that could be a potential outcome. And, and so that, some of the issues we'd have to think through. But I, I think ultimately at least that, that bigger parking lot would be, would be sort of caught. You could use that space in different ways, of course.
Sure, yeah.
Again, those are, some of those things would only be allowed during, you know, future phases, if you will, like, like outdoor dining. There are opportunities to be made available, but I, I realize and that's why I didn't recommend it necessarily, but at least wanted to have a discussion because we are concerned about the congestion occurring and didn't really have a great solution for, for that.
Okay. And that does raise the question about outdoor dining. I have heard that outdoor dining is prohibited, but I cannot find out where that prohibition comes from. So where does it come from?
Yeah, I, I think Scott Graham might be able to speak to it. But I mean, but basically restaurants cannot have in, in, in-house dining and that would include their own patio spaces. But I'll let Scott speak to that.
So, so are you talking about the prohibition for outdoor dining as it relates to the city's municipal code? Or as it relates to the county order?
To the order.
Okay. So by now they can't. They're not supposed to, you know, they're supposed to discern congregation. So the idea would be that you don't have seating areas in and around restaurants. And so the order states that any place that's serving food has to be curbside takeout only and that they can't have seating outside for people to sit at at this point, which is why you see a number of the seating areas closed off at our restaurants now. Example would be Gio's, Giovanni's. Is, is, you know, marked off his area where the tables are. He's removed and put the tables on top of each other for the area that's out in the public seating space. And so that's where it comes from. It comes from the order at this point. But as things change and move forward, I think the idea would be, you know, that a lot of our restaurant facilities are small and they don't, and they don't have a lot of seating to start with. And so the idea would be if, when things are allowed to. And so the idea would be if, when things are allowed to open up, if they're required to maintain six foot of distancing, they would lose about half of their seating at a minimum. And maybe, you know, some of that could be replaced outside or, you know, maybe through the closure of a portion of the Embarcadero or all of it, or maybe even the parking lots down there by Centennial stairs, those types of things. I think that outdoor dining and, and seating idea that the chamber was talking about was sort of commensurate with that sort of understanding that when we do end up going down that road of opening up the seating inside of restaurants that might not be adequate to sustain those restaurants and having some outdoor seating that could be used. It does maintain, this could be useful and helpful for our, our business folks to get them back on their feet.
Okay. I, and, and I, I guess I hear you say that, that it, outdoor dining is prohibited by the order, but it sounds more as if it's by an interpretation of the order. If, if the order prohibits indoor dining, that's not the same as outdoor dining. That does have the, the distancing that is required by the order. And I'm thinking of, Ty Bounty has a, its own outdoor patio. Dark Nectar that just opened has a small outdoor patio. And I'm, I'm wondering if, if they have the tables spaced, as you described, would be allowed for indoor dining under, later in the order. Why is that not okay now?
Because right now the order specifically states that you, that they can't have outdoor seating.
Councilmember Davis, this is Chris Newire. If I could jump in here, so the orders from the state department of public health, there's two major orders, one from March 19th and one from May 7th. Those essentially say that you need to shelter at home or shelter at your place of residence unless you're engaged in an essential activity. And then there is a long list of essential activities and what they are and what they mean. Clearly being able to pick up food for takeout is something that has been allowed by the public health department, the state public health department. However, there's nothing in the list that provides for folks being able to sit down at restaurants. So it's more of an issue of unless an activity is on the essential activity list, then it's presumed to be something that's prohibited. And all California residents are ordered to, you know, shelter in place. So i- if that answers your question as to why outdoor dining is not being allowed right now, it comes straight from the California Department of Public Health and the state public health officers' orders. And there's also over 30 different governor's orders that have been issued. Most significantly, one of the first orders referred to the federal list of essential infrastructure activities. And that's where the state took its own list of what basically is an essential activity. And it's not considered essential to be sitting in an outdoor patio and eating food, notwithstanding the fact that obviously everybody would like a break and like to get some fresh air and sunshine. But it's just not on those lists to be doing that. So that's where it comes from.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions then.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. I just have a, a couple of questions. First is for Chris. Chris, could you elaborate a bit on some of the other communities and how they have addressed the issue of, of masks? I believe you have some examples of some ordinances or orders that have been promulgated by other jurisdictions?
Sure. So I did a review of what other cities and counties are doing throughout the state. And there's basically a range of regulations that I've seen. So at one end of the extreme is, for example, the city of Los Angeles, just this week, ordered that anyone that goes outside basically has to wear some sort of mask. And that includes folks that are hiking, jogging, or essentially are not with anyone in their immediate household. That's one extreme. At the other end of the street, it's other end of the spectrum are, most jurisdictions, if not all, are recommending that folks wear masks. Falling in the middle are communities that are requiring masks in certain situations. The most common is, for example, what you see in Monterey County and city of Santa Barbara and city of Galita. Those are the examples I found that are within the region. City manager already covered what's going on in Slow County itself. Those require masks when you actually are going to essentially grocery stores. You're engaging in some sort of commercial activity that's considered essential. And then the employees at those businesses should be wearing masks when they're interacting with the public. Those orders do not require wearing a mask if you're outside in general. They generally require, if you will, wearing a mask when you're congregating in some public place to engage in an essential activity. So we see a wide range of regulations out there. And if the city were to consider adopting some sort of regulation, there would be a number of questions that I would have for council on what they would like to see. Not only where folks are going to be required to wear a mask, but also what the exceptions are. There's exceptions ranging from the age of two up to the age of 12, I've seen. And of course, folks with some sort of chronic illness or medical condition that prevents them from wearing masks. Generally, there's exceptions for that. And then there's the issue of enforcement. I'll note that the first reading of the ordinance that Pismo Beach did is it required that a business is supposed to enforce the mask order, not the city. And if the business doesn't, then the business would be sanctioned. So that would put the burden on the business rather than having the city send code enforcement officers or police officers out and about in town and having to regulate who is or is not wearing a mask when they're engaging in an essential activity. So that's the range, a couple of questions if we were going to do a regulation. And I want to be crystal clear. I am not, and I don't think it is my place to take a position on whether we should or shouldn't adopt a mask policy. That's entirely up to the city council as the policymakers. And I will just simply await direction if there is any on a regulation to bring to council. Thank you.
Appreciate that, that detailed list of examples seems to me across the state. It's, it varies significantly and I appreciate that. This may be perhaps for Chief Cox and I, I, I'm not singling out from a business standpoint, any sector within our city. I just want that to be known, nor am I belittling any, any particular business sector. But as I have moved through the community this past weekend and the weekend before, I've noticed that with regard to our hotels, that it appears like there is a significant increase in the number of cars parked in the hotel parking spaces, especially during the weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And I, I'm wondering, given the fact that we do have a, a state order for shelter in place and at least a current county order that hasn't expired yet. But nonetheless, the state order will remain. How does one even begin to enforce the notion of allowing only essential versus non-essential individuals stay overnight in hotels, vacation rentals or motels? And I'll open that for Chief Cox and/or Mr. Collins or anybody on staff that might want to address that. But, but that in particularly concerned me. And again, I'm not trying to point fingers at that business sector. It's just a concern about enforcement and how that's possible.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll take a stab at it to start with. It, it is very difficult to enforce. In fact, I just had a conversation this morning with, with all of our local chiefs and sheriff in our CJA meeting where this topic got brought up because they're seeing this throughout the county, that hotel usage has increased. And in our conversation, one of the things that, that each of us was pointed out was that the hard part to tell is, well, so many of these, these hotels book online. They, they don't have any idea where some of these people are coming from because they're not, they're not speaking with them over the phone, so to speak, when they're, when they're taking the reservations. A, a lot of that is done online and through third-party outlets right now. The other thing is that there are so many other essential workers in construction and, and other types of people that are coming on, that are coming in and staying in some of the hotels. However, one can assume that some of the weekend traffic is due to outside tourists or visitors. Another part, component of that is, is the legality of law enforcement going in and asking to look at and see the hotel rosters strictly to just determine whether these people are local or not. So there, there's several different components and, and, you know, all the way from the state level down to the county level on, on how that should be enforced and what others are doing. I can tell you that we're, we're in line in Moro Bay in regards to what the rest of the county is doing. That might be something, if we decided internally that, that we needed to take a, a, a deeper in-depth look at who's actually staying in the hotels, that would require some time, either, either by my staff or code enforcement or others to be able to go and contact the hoteliers directly to ask them that information. And I can tell you that some of them may even refuse to provide it, just, just in regards to protecting their.
Chief, if you could turn off your mic, other chief, not you, Cox. Chief Cox, go ahead.
So, so yeah, that would be, that would be, you know, it, it would be difficult to enforce. It, it would take a concerted effort from, from multiple angles to be able to do that. And, and again, I think we, we would get some pushback through, through the business group. But again, I, I do agree with you that the shelter at home order is still currently in place, which, which does, you know, direct people to stay in their, in their localities or within their communities.
Thank you. Great, a great answer to a real complex question, I'm sure. And also, Chief Cox, could you speak to how now your department and/or the city would enforce a potential congregation of a large number of people, let's say at a beach site or in a business that had carryout, that had a large congregation of individuals? And, and if one of your patrol people came by there, what methods do you use to make sure that there's adherence to social distancing requirements when it's, appears as if possibly that's not occurring? And, and how are the businesses involved in that as well, from your perspective?
The businesses have been, have been fairly cooperative with us. We've taken a stance from the very beginning to, you know, to, to make, to educate folks, to make them aware. And again, when you're seeing the turnover of people, especially visitors from outside the area, our, our, our first position has always been to educate them and then we provide the warning. That warning goes for both the business a- and the violator, whether that be a group of people that are standing outside together. The, the main reason, thankfully for us here locally, is that we've not had to issue citations is because when we, when we provide somebody with the warning, they usually adhere to that. They'll either separate, they'll kind of go along their ways or, or they'll, they'll maintain an appropriate social distance when they're advised to do so. We haven't had anybody that has flat out refused or, or taken a, an assertive position against the recommendation to, to comply voluntarily. The, the reason that we have the ordinance in, in place is that we can enforce it if we are to come upon that either individual or business that willfully or fails to comply to the, the request for compliance. And so far, luckily, we haven't had that. Again, in our conversation this morning with the other municipal chiefs and sheriff, that's kind of been the theme throughout our county is, is nobody's really had to issue these thousand dollar citations as of yet because we, we've been seeing that we gain compliance through presence and through the requesting for the voluntary compliance. There is concern amongst, amongst all of the group that, you know, the more and more people we start to see coming in, you know, we may have a little more difficult challenge ahead of us of keeping them separated, especially in the areas that we've got blocked off because we're, we're forcing, in essence, we're forcing more people into a smaller area by blocking off the rock and, and other parking lots. So that's why we're seeing some of these bigger groups is we, we've kind of taken away some of the space to allow them to spread out in other areas.
Great. Thank you for that. And Chief Cox, another question. As a community member, walking down the Embarcadero, if I see what appears to be a major violation of social distancing, how is a community member, should I respond to that? Should I directly confront individuals with regard to, you know, the shelter at home order and social distancing requirements in our county? Or, or how does, how, how do community members that, that see these kinds of egregious actions, how should we respond?
Well, that, that's a, that's a, that's a tough question and I'll give you kind of a two-part answer. It's, we don't ever encourage our residents or citizens to take those kind of actions on their own. However, with that said, it, it is, it is common that sometimes community peer pressure does work. And by simply reminding somebody that, you know, hey folks, you should, you should spread out a little bit to keep yourselves safe and to keep the rest of us safe. Sometimes that does work. However, not everybody is comfortable in making that type of, and I don't want to say confrontation, but just in, in kind of making that kind of contact with individuals that they don't know. So by all means, we, we recommend that they contact us directly. Now, again, part of that issue is that my officers are responding to multiple other calls throughout the city all day long. So by the time we get a call that there may be a group of eight people standing in a, in a circle together, talking or, or eating in a parking lot, by the time the officers get there, those subjects may have finished and moved on. So there may not be an active violation taking place at that time. However, we, we respond to all of those calls, will continue to do so throughout this event. But, but, but yeah, it's a little more difficult because not everybody is comfortable in, in speaking out on behalf of either themselves or the city as a whole. And we, we encourage those folks to contact us directly, although peer pressure does seem to work in, in some, some cases.
Appreciate that. A difficult situation. It seems like, and this is a question, we, we as good neighbors, if, if, you know, we're, we're calling the police department every time we see a potential, I'll call it minor infraction or infraction, that that could overwhelm the resources that we have to respond to that. While at the same time, it, it appears like, and correct me if I'm wrong, there might be concerns if we're a little bit too aggressive in how we neighborly remind folks about social distancing and, and the appropriateness of their gathering and, and the behaviors that are going on. So, so in some ways you do encourage that. Do we have a communication piece prepared that we can hand out to individuals as an educational tool? I know a number of communities have developed a one-page actual handout that says, you know, we understand you're here, but here are the regulations that we'd like you to adhere to. And, and just as a reminder, a friendly reminder, they give it to individuals. Is that something that you've considered, talked about or?
That's absolutely something that we can put together to have a, a, a small handout. And we, we have talked about it in our city group about having something, a, a handout to even provide to the businesses that they could hand out to guests as they're either purchasing commerce property or, or even meals to go. They could hand out a small flyer or a little handout card, again, just as a reminder of, of proper social distancing and spacing and, and even the use, the recommended use of masks. So yes, absolutely something we can look into.
Great. Thank you. Next question has to do with the Rock parking lot. And, and the question could be either for you, chief, or for any other staff member. If we open the Rock parking lot, are we sending a message that's contrary to the message we're trying to really get out? And that message may well be, you know, we're not open for routine business or other than essential travel. Would there be the possibility that this could significantly increase the attraction of tourists if they hear that the Rock parking lot is? If they hear that the Rock Parking Lot is open?
Well, I, I think we do run the risk and, and again, it kind of comes back to interpretation. We have been getting the message out there that we are closed, that, that, that we are not really open for visitors. But, but I think by opening the Rock Parking Lot, it, it does just give us an option for spacing out the people that are coming anyway. And we've talked about this many times, we can't control the number of people that are coming into the city. So what it does is it gives us that option of spacing it out and having a little more control over the groups and the congregations of people. We have talked in our city team about continuing the message that we are not encouraging people to come, that we are still not, not open to the outside. However, it would be something more internally for our folks. So I guess it really breaks down to how people interpret the actions versus the message.
Great. Thank you for that. And this is for Ms. Callaway. Ms. Callaway, as the PIO, Public Information Officer, could you be specific in telling me at present how the city is going about getting out its messaging that quote unquote, we're not open for business. Individuals from outside of the area should not come to Morro Bay for other than essential travel. And I'm looking for specifics on that. And also at the county level, if there's anything being done specifically to get that messaging out.
Sure. The, the county is actually rolling out a very targeted social media and messaging platform for this weekend about vacationing at home. They're taking a, a strong lead on that and discouraging travel to the area specifically targeted at the valley region, which is where we tend to get a lot of our, our visitors from right now as well, or we at least suspect. I know I have done an interview with a radio station in the valley discouraging travel at this time. I believe our commander has talked to a newspaper in the valley indicating the same thing. We did some social media pushouts last week. Believe it was last week. They all kind of blend together now. Discouraging travel here to the weekend, for the weekend. And, and, you know, we're not welcoming visitors at this time. And in our press releases, we've issued the same thing. I get numerous calls daily, either phone calls or emails, asking if people can come, come to Morro Bay or visit Morro Bay, particularly last week on Mother's Day. And I'm continuing the message that we aren't welcoming visitors to our community at this time, that it's just not safe for anybody, not safe for them and not safe for us to do so. And I know our hotline communicates the same thing when they get calls. All of our staff are, are responding in, in that similar messaging. The entire, it, it is very contradictory. We think about adding, you know, garbage receptacles and additional porta potties to accommodate the traffic, yet we're trying to discourage people from coming. So it's a, it's a fine line and really how to mitigate that and how best to handle that.
And I, I don't know if this is a, an appropriate city message, but for locals, I would assume if you're in a high-risk group, over sixty-five, sixty-five or older with secondary comorbidities and or under sixty-five with significant respiratory, cardiovascular, lung disease, diabetes, et cetera, cancer. If we are messaging to our community adequately, the need to stay home, particularly during times when we're seeing an influx of outsiders into our area, how are we messaging that and are we continuing to do that?
We haven't done a lot of messaging this week and we particularly are waiting to see some direction tonight to do some pretty targeted messaging for tomorrow and in advance of the weekend. And we do try to message weekly about social distancing still being in effect. You know, honoring that, hand washing and all of the, the practices that are being encouraged. We want to encourage the appropriate behavior and try to discourage people from coming from out of town. So we try to balance those messages to the best we can.
And this, this will be my last question. Chris, our city attorney, quit, this is for you. Does the city have the right as an entity through its enforcement of the state mandate to potentially stop people at, I'll call it the border, so to speak, you know, let's say the 141 interchange? Or does the city have the right to walk up to an individual, determine where they're from, determine potentially that they're not from this area and then give them a warning regarding the fact that they're here for non-essential business from outside of the area? Can you just talk about the legalities of that or the, and the risk issues associated with that, please?
Sure. So if there is a public health emergency, if we're not basically under pandemic conditions, then the city does not have the authority to question individuals traveling within the United States. United States residents have the right to travel throughout the entire country. Even during this pandemic, I have yet to find any authority for the city to be just randomly asking people for identification and asking them where they've come from and why they're in town. I don't know if that is something that lies ahead of Morro Bay and the nation, but the few cities that have tried to do that, I have not found them, I have not found them being able to do that when it's been taken to court. My understanding is that out in North Carolina, in one of their resort areas, the Outer Banks, there was an attempt to ID individuals coming into the resort area and that has been subject to challenges. So in short, I would advise the city to not be setting up checkpoints or asking for ID from individuals just in town. At this point, I, I don't see how that would be constitutional. So needless to say, we are faced with having to deal with this public health emergency and to try to flatten the curve and try to comply with the state and county orders while also respecting constitutional rights. And this is an ever-evolving issue, but in short, no, I would not advise the city to be setting up checkpoints. And no, I would not be advising the city to be randomly asking for identification unless there's probable cause that a police officer has. Or to get into the further details if it's justified for some other reason. Chief Cox could go into those reasons as well, but essentially the police need to have some reason to stop you. And I would not advise right now the city going down that course.
Thank you for that. And again, I wasn't recommending, I was just asking the question. So I wasn't suggesting.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And, and I think that's a, a great question because, you know, I have heard other folks in the legal community bandying about this issue and the general consensus, of course. And I think that your question, of course, was geared towards public education is that, you know, we, we can't be doing that. If, if, if some folks in the community are wondering, well, why don't we do that? You know, as, as we all know, we can't be doing that. So I think that's a great public messaging, public information question. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. And I think I said that was my last question, but I do have one more that came to mind and maybe Mr. Collins or any staff member may want to respond. With regard to our businesses that are what I would call potentially high risk for social distancing infractions or issues like supermarkets, retail outlets that are allowed to be open, liquor stores, our gas station markets, et cetera. Do we know how effectively those businesses are protecting their employees in order to protect themselves from the public? And also protecting the public from their employees? In other words, are we seeing significant wearing or mandated, wearing a mask in these businesses? Potentially placards being placed, plastic placards between clerks and individuals that may come in to buy things? You know, I'm just curious if we've got any trends on that or, or what we've seen. And that's for anybody on staff. Anybody?
The answer is, the answer is, no, sorry. We don't, okay? We, we don't, we don't have the staff to go out and check all the essential businesses, nor will we when all the others are open. So we're, we're gonna rely upon businesses doing the right thing and doing a lot of consulting ahead of time. But we won't have the ability to go to each business and, and make sure that they're operating every day at the appropriate level they're supposed to. So there is going to be a bit of responsibility, a lot of responsibility put on the business owner, but also in sort of the rolling out to make sure we're doing good education. But, and then having opportunities for, for folks to lodge complaints when they see issues. But I, I don't have a sense of, of the existing businesses other than the, the few that I've been in. And notable, notable changes have been made in the grocery stores to help make those more essential services as, as safe an experience as possible. But I, I don't, I can't speak for all the businesses right now.
Right. And thanks. I didn't expect that you could, nor am I suggesting that through enforcement, we, we do go in and try to validate that there's significant protections going on. My observation is that a majority of businesses have implemented excellent practices and would encourage them to continue to do that, but wondered if there were pockets of concern that maybe had been seen through some of our enforcement actions. And it sounds like, but for the most part, we're doing a good job. So. Well, well, that ends my question. Sorry. I think this is a, I know this is an extremely important topic to our community and wanted to make sure that it was vetted completely. And thanks to the other council members for your probing questions and trying to get to the very depths of the concerns that have been raised by staff and the staff report. I'll, I'm gonna move us to discussion and I'll go ahead and, and start trying to summarize at least my feelings with regard to the questions that staff has asked. And then I'll move to each council member and, and ask you to give your opinions with regard to each of the areas. So you, you may perhaps want to take notes if you can on, on some of the, the issues that staff has raised first. For our community, as policymakers and decision makers, the, the balance between maintaining public health and being responsible fiduciaries, and that is to appropriately manage the economy of the city. At, at times these days during this pandemic, seem to be conflicting values that we're confronted with, dealing with massive losses of revenue, potential business failures, people out of work, significant anxieties and concerns about those issues. But I must say, and, and I think I speak for the full council, our primary responsibility is to protect the public health. And that's what we are here for. The concern of a, a, a city like Morro Bay that has a single economic engine, which is tourism, for me, also as a clinician, is, is this. Morro Bay and San Luis Obispo County has done an excellent job of managing this pandemic through the leadership of our Chief Administrative Officer, Wade Horton, and Dr. Borenstein, our public health physician. With that, we have, in essence, flattened the curve, provided for surge capacity in our hospitals, acquired an alternate care center that can deal with a secondary surge, should, should that occur. And have managed contact follow-up and testing protocols, I think, quite well. Unfortunately, at present, we do not qualify for moving to the next level in the state's Phase Two program because of the lack of validation of the attestation that was submitted by our public health officer. And the concern that the elected officials talk about is not so much what's going on within our county and our cities and the behavior or performance of our businesses or individuals, but the potential influx of individuals from the outside, that is the opening up of tourism too rapidly and the, the influx of individuals that come from counties that have a much higher caseload, much higher death rate and/or in, in essence, a, a much higher disease rate than does Morro Bay. And with that brings the inherent concerns about maintaining the public health and protecting our population that currently is under a state, a stay-at-home order and balancing those, those incentives. And that's my biggest concern is over the last couple of weekends, seeing the large influx of individuals. Realizing as our city attorney has outlined, that it would violate constitutional rights, nor would I even suggest that you card people at the border, so to speak, or you confront people on the streets to determine if they're from out of town and then tell them to get out of town if, if they're not from here, doing essential business. That's just not possible. And, and I, I just want to compliment Chief Cox, our, our city staff in general for the excellent enforcement that you've been able to do with limited resources. And then I, and I know that all of council appreciates the significant efforts that you have made in those areas. I do think it's time for us to know as a community that Morro Bay itself cannot move to the next phase of anything with regard to the state plan. It, it doesn't have the capacity or capability, nor the authority to do that. We remain under the state order now. We are not sanctioned to move forward with the START Plan that was developed by San Luis Obispo County. And I personally don't believe that we will be allowed to move within the confines of that plan. So we are at quote unquote, the mercy of the state in terms of how fast we can open our businesses. It's not within the purview of the council to do that. What is in our purview is protecting our public as much as possible from exposure to what I'll call the external environment that will come in, given our beautiful weather and the need to escape the valley. And that's guaranteed. And so with that, you've raised some questions, staff, that I'll give you my comments on and then ask each of my council peers to comment on. First and foremost, with regard to the beach issue, I personally support opening the Rock Parking Lot. I have noticed the, the backup and congestion that has occurred. With that being closed, I think you've given some excellent guidelines for actually opening that up with appropriate social distancing. I'm a little conflicted in that recommendation in that I want to couple that with a recommendation that we increase our communications to the external world through social media, maybe even advertisements in specific other communities to say, Morro Bay is not open for business. In general, please do not travel here, here now. We love our tourists, but now is not the time to come. Because I think opening the, the park, the Rock Parking Lot in some ways signifies, oh, Morro Bay is opening up even further. Come on down and it might attract even more individuals. So I, I would be supportive of staff's recommendation to do that, along with some very solid messaging and advertising. And I understand the county, as you've said, is also going to be doing that, that now is not the time to come as a tourist to, to our county because of our stay-at-home order and because of order and, and because of this pandemic. So, so I do support that. Secondarily, I support your recommendations on trash. I saw it this week. Secondarily, I support your recommendations on trash. I saw it this weekend. If we can't keep them out, we've got to control the trash. I think you've got a thoughtful plan to deal with that. I, I do appreciate that and would be very supportive of moving forward with the trash and restroom plan. Because those are expenses, as we incur those, that are female reimbursable. And so I would support that. With regard to social distancing and signage, I support your plan for increased signage at businesses and encouraging businesses to utilize tape markings or appropriate social distancing as much as possible. I've frequented a number of businesses, especially take-home restaurants, trying to support our community, that have done this very well. And, and I'm asking our businesses to step up and help with enforcing the social distancing guidelines. And so I do support your recommendations in the staff report with regard to that. With regard to the issue of enforcement, I have appreciated how Chief Cox has articulated and then implemented, implemented his plan for enforcement, and also how Mr. Graham and his staff have worked to respond to, through code enforcement to the issues that have been raised. And I, I'm very appreciative of that. My suggestion is that we concentrate our, our patrols in areas that we know are the outliers. And you may well obviously be doing this right now, but expressly, we know that in certain areas we have quote unquote, "more problems" than in other areas. And, and if, if not already, prioritizing those areas for frequent visits by our enforcement staff, I think that we should do that. I, I, Mr. Niermeyer outlined the fact that we're not gonna confront people and, and, and through an enforcement action and ask them where they're from. That's a violation of their personal rights. I understand that and I agree with that. And I would also suggest that we message our hoteliers. I appreciate our hoteliers and the predicament that they're in with regard to the influx of folks. But, but once again, I, I would support messaging to them to, to somehow through their own system, and I'm not suggesting any detailed methodology, but that we should not be allowing for outside travel that is non-essential. And, and again, I'm not gonna be specific nor prescriptive with regard to that, but I'm, I'm just suggesting that we remind our hoteliers, moteliers and vacation rental owners that we're still under this, this guideline and this enforcement. Masks. Everybody's talking about masks and, boy, I think you could probably find any article in the clinical literature that would tell you what you would want to do or what you should do with regard to masks or that would validate your opinion. Being a clinician, I'll tell you that there are three kinds of masks. There, there is an N95 mask, which actually filters out the virus. Those are reserved for healthcare providers. There is no mandate anywhere through either the CDC, the California Department of Public Health, nor the County Department of Public Health to recommend that those masks be utilized other than by healthcare practitioners. So I'm gonna remove that from the equation. The other two types of masks are, are surgical masks, which are healthcare-grade masks that do not filter virus, but, but help stop projectile respiratory virons from escaping an individual who might be carrying the virus through coughing or other mechanisms that could spread to other individuals. And then there's the cloth mask, the so-called homemade cloth mask that I think the majority of people that we see around utilizing. It's known that surgical masks are better at stopping the spread of viral shedding through respiratory excretions than cloth masks. However, the recommendations by, by the CDC, as well as the Department of Public Health for our county, suggests that those masks should be reserved for healthcare providers as well, because they're in short supply and needed for one-on-one healthcare. With that, I would be supportive of a local ordinance being developed. And again, I'm not gonna be prescriptive. I'd, I'd like to suggest that we could have our city attorney come back with maybe a list of potential recommendations, but I would be supportive of actually having a city ordinance that would mandate the use, use of cloth masks within areas that it's difficult to maintain social distancing, including retail businesses that are open for in retail consumption of products, like I'm just using Albertson's as an example, in areas like that. Also for situations where an individual may not be able to maintain a distance of six feet between another individual. I do not support the use of masks in general for anybody that is walking outside. I think that social distancing is the appropriate way to handle that. And when you're exercising, cloth masks can also be detrimental to you when your respiratory rate goes up and you're trying to bring in oxygen into your system. And so I, I, I would not support a, a citywide mandate for wearing cloth masks outside of one's home, other than in the specific, some of the specific areas that I've talked about, where it's difficult to maintain social distancing. And I would, I would feel comfortable having our city attorney come back with, as he does so well, a list of areas for consideration that might help meet the intent of, of what I've talked about. With regard to signage, I do support, if I didn't say it previously, increased signage. I also am familiar that Councilmember Davis passed on some information from Pismo Beach that they're using a, a very nice educational piece that they're handing out to, to folks that are potential violators. And it, it very simply outlines, outlines for them exactly what's required. And so a simple educational handout sheet, I think I heard the term educate, 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 and then educate again, and then communicate, communicate, communicate over and over. And I think that might be helpful in assisting individuals and knowing what the expectations are generally. So if we could develop something like that, I would be supportive of that. With regard to enforcement, I, I support what we are present doing. I'm very proud of, again, our police department under Chief Cox's leadership, and also very complimentary of Mr. Graham and his staff for how they're handling code enforcement. And I believe that our businesses are very capable of quote unquote, "self-policing" and adhering to the mandates that are most important for not only protecting the public, but protecting them as well. And, and I, I would engender the assistance of the Chamber of Commerce for even further guidance. The, the state of California has brought forward guidance for businesses. And also our, our Department of Public Health has guidance for individual businesses about sanitary practices, handwashing, social distancing, and masks. And I would support somehow, in cooperation with the chamber, making sure that our businesses have access to that information, are pointed in the right direction, and are getting the supplies that they need to be able to comply with a lot of the mandates that are out there at present. And I'm looking at my list here to see if I've missed any of the areas that the staff report was, oh. I do not support closing the Embarcadero. I think that has two impacts. One, I just think it'll back up traffic in the surrounding areas, much like we're seeing with the closure of the Rock Parking Lot. And two, I believe it would be devastating to the businesses that are open at present for curbside delivery and curbside service. And so I would not support closing any portion of the Embarcadero to traffic at this point in time because of the issue of, well, the issues that I just outlined. Lastly, I'll, I would ask our PIO, Public Information Officer Ms. Callaway, to increase our communications externally to other communities, surrounding communities that we know come here frequently, messaging, you know, "we love you, but don't come now. This is not the time to come." Using social media, advertisements in the newspaper, and, and in cooperative partnership with the county, also getting that messaging out. And with that, I know that's a lot. I will stop. I think I've covered all the areas that you had questions about in the staff report. And I will then turn it over to my colleagues. First, I believe Councilmember Addis had to leave. Are you here, Councilmember Addis? No, she had another engagement. I think she's gone. So let me, let me ask Councilmember Heller if you would comment, please, sir.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, to follow up on the discussion about the county and where we stand with, with respect to Sacramento and so forth. Mr. Mayor, if you could follow up and, and keep us informed of what it looks like, two issues that we don't completely comply with with respect to Sacramento's requirements, which is the number of cases that we've had in the county over the last 14 days, and what the county is doing to try and reduce those, those areas of the county where cases still seem to be going up. And I don't know if they, what they're doing about that. I'd kind of like to know what they're doing to help us with that. And then the other issue with the county is the testing issue. It sounds like we don't have the required level of testing, either the cap, the capacity, or we haven't tested enough people, one of those two. If you could keep us informed of those two issues, I would appreciate it. Obviously, if we could take care of those and remedy those, we can go into Phase Two. And I see them as kind of a roadblock. I want to make sure the county is still taking action with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. I'll just answer you right now. Absolutely happy to do that and am following up with them weekly on this. So yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And then to all the business owners out there who might be listening or, or not, I just want to give you encouragement to hang in there. I really think we, we are moving closer to opening up at least a partial reopening. I think it's a very positive step that the county and the state have kind of blended the website and you're now being referred to a state-run website. And I want to give it to all, all sectors of business, businesses in Morro Bay, and that's covid19.ca.gov forward slash industry hyphen guidance, guidance, excuse me. Stephen Peck, who called in early with public comments, said, "get ready." And I think that's the best thing I can tell you is get ready. Go on this website, look at what the guidance is there today. It might change tomorrow, but the framework of the guidance that is going to be required of you is there now. I encourage you to get ready because when the checkered, when the green flag goes up, we want you to open your doors right away. Okay, now to the issues here, beaches, boat ramps, parking in Embarcadero. Every one of these issues has two or three or maybe even four different sides to it. I am focusing my comments on the shelter-in-place order, which we are still under. We can't stop people from coming here. I don't really want to stop people from coming here. But on the other hand, people want to come here because it's a great place to reduce stress, natural beauty, all the reasons we live here is why people come here. I am against opening the Rock Parking Lot because I don't want, want to make it any easier. I do feel like it's a mixed message. If we don't want, really don't want people to come here, I think opening the lot conflicts with that message. Parking, is there a parking impact as a result of keeping it closed? Yes, there is. To be frank, I want that impact to stay there because I want to, people to go someplace else. I gotta be honest with you. Maybe they won't come and try and surf from that spot. Maybe they'll go someplace off the coast where there's more room to surf. I understand it's an impact there with respect to social distancing, but I think it's a better solution than opening up the parking lot. I would like to see it kept closed. Trash and restrooms, anything that's reimbursable, we should absolutely do. I want to comment, though, that trash is a chronic issue in Embarcadero, and we have, we need a permanent solution. And when I talk to people about it, they say, "put in more trash cans." Now, I know there's more labor involved with emptying those trash cans, but to me, there is no excuse for our Embarcadero to have trash problems. We've got to resolve those long-term as well as short-term. Social distancing and signage, I really like the idea of a message, like something that some of the other cities in our county are doing regarding social distancing, signage, little cards we can hand out to people. I think that's really important. Enforcement, this is just such a tough thing to enforce this. First of all, start with lodging, hotels and motels. In my opinion, it's unenforceable. I think we should keep the message that we're sending out, but let's not waste any time trying to enforce something that I don't think there's any way to, with the resources that we have to enforce it. Masks. I have gone back and forth on this. I have read the articles. I watched the news. One day I'm this way, the other day I'm next. I'll tell you though, my personal experience with my masks and, and what I'm doing now. I wear a mask based on something I read yesterday whenever I leave the house. And there are a couple of reasons. One is I believe that I am protecting other people from all the droplets that come out when I speak or I cough or I sneeze. I'm protecting you. That's why I wear it. Now, there may be studies that say that doesn't really help. In my mind, it helps. In my mind, it also sends a message to people that I see that we're not safe yet. We're not safe yet. And I get this feeling that a lot of people are kind of relaxing a little bit. The social distancing maybe is not really that important. I don't really need to wear a mask. There's only been one death in the county. I think it's important that we continue to message that we're not safe yet. So as far as enforcing it or mandating it, no, I don't think so. Finding people for not wearing a mask, no, I don't think so. But part of the message, I think, that we need to get out to people is, please, wear a mask when you're in our city. And that, that's a messaging piece, obviously. A couple of other things here. I have lots of notes. Embarcadero, frankly, I would like to try, even if it's a couple hours on one Saturday, I would like to try closing one lane. We have, we have an impacted area. People are going to be here. Social distancing is easier if you have someplace to walk. I'd like to just try it because there's been so much talk for so many years about making it more pedestrian-friendly and how great it would be if we, maybe we have one-way traffic. I think we should try something. Let's find out what it's like. Does it work? Is it gonna attract more people here? I don't know. I think we should give it a try. One thing we haven't discussed yet, I got some comments from some people who said there were some rowdy parties on their street, people of them out of town, tailgating and stuff like that. Chief Cox, if you're still on the line, I wonder if you could address that and, and, and just kind of let me know what, what your opinion is about that and how much, how prevalent that is.
We've not been getting many reports of that. So if, if somebody's reporting it directly to yourself, Councilmember Heller, or other council members, we still encourage our, our residents to contact us directly if they're seeing that type of violation occur outside of the, the other impacted areas that we're talking about. Loud parties, noisy neighbors, those kinds of things are some of our typical daily calls for service that we are still responding to. Every one of those calls that we get. So we would encourage people to contact us directly. So we would encourage people to contact us directly for that kind of issue.
Okay, thank you. One last thing here. The order, as I understand it, is takeout curbside service, retail or restaurants. So to me, that means if you're going to order a pizza, you call in the pizza. They say, "Come in 10 minutes." You go down there, you pay for it. Ideally, they bring it out to you, which a lot of places they do. And you pay for it, minimal contact, and you drive away. We have a number of restaurants that have a takeout window. It's no call-in, it's not the, you know, the conventional call-in and pickup kind of deal. There are long lines, there are crowds, people without masks. So we have a problem, in my opinion, in several locations, half a dozen restaurants that are doing that. I think we need to address that issue. Is that okay? It doesn't really comply with what the ordinance is right now relative to restaurants. And it's creating a lot of problems with trash and social distancing and a lot of other issues that maybe we shouldn't be dealing with right now.
To that, I would say I agree also in some of those situations. I think that the businesses also need to take some ownership and some responsibility. Maybe have an employee that is standing outside, that is directing people where they should be and where they should go to help them pick up their product. As was mentioned earlier in the conversation, the dining situation is for takeout, delivery. Now, whether you come and pick it up and walk away and get in your car and drive home, or whether you come and take the food and go somewhere else and eat it, the order was that there is not to be dining at the facility that you get the food from. So yeah, I think that the businesses each need to help take part of that responsibility in helping the social distancing, the spacing, you know, even to the extent of having an employee that might be out there wiping down the counters or wiping off the machines that they're using, that kind of thing. I don't think all of that responsibility falls to the city.
I agree with you 100% on that, Chief. And I'm not sure how we would enforce that, but I do think restaurants need to address the trash issues and the social distancing issue and take some responsibility for monitoring that as opposed to just putting stickers down on the concrete is one thing, but actually assigning staff to go out there and make it clear, you know, you need to step back because, like I say, you have better things to do. So those are my comments. Is there anything I missed that I need to talk about?
No, I think you got it. Thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. The Councilmember Davis, sir.
Yes, thank you. As we are starting to move forward on the governor's road to recovery, I don't think that the danger of infection has lessened, but I think that we're learning how to reduce our exposure. And we're learning and we are practicing ways that help to increase public safety. But I think also that we have to accept some certain aspects of reality. People are coming to Morro Bay. And when they get here, they will park wherever they can find a space. They will walk wherever they can find walkways. They are eating their meals wherever they feel like sitting down and eating their meals. I am in favor of accepting that reality. And I think we should provide a venue that maximizes safe distancing for this situation because we just can't avoid it. I favor reopening the Rock parking lot. And I would like to see proposals from staff for rerouting traffic in the North Embarcadero parking lot as described from the Coast Guard down to Morro Bay Landing and on the Embarcadero between Harbor and Pacific. Not necessarily, I'm not espousing that we do that. I would like to see some proposals for how that would work. Extended public spaces are going to be the future for group activities such as dining, music, entertainment, any gathering that can take place outside. I would like for staff to look at that kind of future and describe for us what it might look like. I'm in favor of developing a handout, a code of conduct, that we can give to our visitors. And as for the masks, pros and cons, like just as everyone says, I see lots of people wearing masks and I regard that as a personal choice. Like Jeff, I choose to wear a mask whenever I go outside because I feel as if I am protecting others from anything that I might provide. However, the CDC does not see enough benefit to mandate masks. And so I do not favor mandating masks. I have seen on TVs verbal and physical confrontations in places where they are mandated, and I don't want to set up that scenario in Morro Bay. I favor social pressure so that people can feel comfortable with their own personal decisions. And specifically, as regards the Pismo Beach ordinance, I would never support making business owners enforce masking. I agree with the approach that staff is taking on trash, restrooms, social distancing, and signage. And I think that Chief Cox's police force is a model for the way that we are educating, educate, educate, educate. So those are my comments. Is there anything else, Scott, that I need to give you an opinion on?
I think you covered them, Councilmember. Thank you.
And I'm done.
So appreciate that. Thank you both for your comments. Just to be clear with regard to majority, the majority of the three that are here support opening up the Rock parking lot. That was one of the contentious pieces that Councilmember Heller did not. However, myself and Councilmember Davis did. And then I supported bringing back some potential ordinance with suggestions from council for a masked ordinance, but Councilmember Heller and Davis do not support that. So the majority then would prevail there, so no mask mandate. Other than that, I believe we had agreement across the board with a couple of other excellent comments by council members. So staff, is there anything else that you would want at this time from us?
My camera pointed the wrong way there. I think that's helpful. I would like the attorney to sort of weigh in, and I know he probably doesn't want to, just about, I think there's informal direction here, but just as far as the Rock lot, I wanted to just have him weigh in on with having three out of five. And also to see if Mayor Heading and Councilmember Heller were supportive of Mr. Davis's suggestion to maybe draw up some proposals for rerouting of traffic or walking traffic in those particular areas.
I would be supportive of that, yes. Rerouting of traffic, yeah.
In regards to the city manager's question on whether or not parking lots should be opened with three council members offering their opinions, unless the council were to actually affirmatively say one way or the other, that truly is a staff decision. And so I think, I'm not trying to pass the ball back to staff, but, you know, staff has heard what the three council members' opinions were. And, you know, staff, I think, needs to decide whether that's enough to change the current policy. Council can always weigh in and pass a formal resolution or even ordinance, even though that would be too much, but...
Good, that's helpful. Yeah, and then I think if Councilmember Heller wanted to weigh in on the question.
Let me weigh in on that. I mean, I'm all about giving as much work to staff as we possibly can conjure up. And this sounds like something that falls in that category. And one other comment, if we're going to open up the Rock parking lot, let's charge 10 bucks. I mean, let's try out getting paid for parking. I mean, that's a great parking lot, it's fantastic. People go there, spend the day there. Let's get some money out of it, come on, let's give it a try. Now's the time, man, now's the time. That might keep people away. So as far as plans and so forth, I like Councilmember Davis's comments very much. I am very concerned about all the staff members just dropping dead on us in the same day. And then I have no idea what we're going to do then. So in that context, yeah, that'd be great. Let's open up the Embarcadero, let's have some street performers. Let's, I mean, we've got lots of great ideas. I'm just concerned about what we're putting on the staff at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. So with that, yeah, I think we have good direction and want to confirm that at this point, the attorney will not be directed to proceed with development of potential mask regulations. Is that correct, Mayor?
That's what the majority suggested, that's correct.
Okay. I think we have enough to go on for everything else, I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, again, my thanks to staff for all the work you're doing in these difficult times. We appreciate you greatly and thank you for the excellent report. Great discussion, council. And thanks, community, for weighing in. We will continue to update you on the items routinely during each council meeting. With that, I will adjourn the special meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be on Tuesday, May 26, 5:30 PM via teleconference. Thank you, be safe, be well, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mayor, staff.
Thank you.
Chiefs.
Thank you.